Call me to orders, please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance, shoot a flag, United States of America and the two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Brewer?
Here.
Trustee Carter?
Here.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Tate?
Here.
Trustee Todd?
Here.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the review of the executive four minutes.
So moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Carter. Questions? That's word. Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll just entertain a motion to re-convince.
So moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Carter. Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting of February 12th, 2019.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we approve these with two changes. The first change is under unfinished business. The trustee who moved and seconded should be switched so that it's trustee Carter making the motion, trustee Zupan seconding. And then the second change is the adjournment time should be 9:33 and not 8:15 p.m.
Any other? Correct. All right, I'll entertain a motion to. I'll entertain a motion to accept these minutes. Changes, I'll take a second to, I'll entertain a second for those necessary changes.
Second.
Moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Carter. Any questions?
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting of February 12th, 2019.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we approve these with two changes. The first change is under unfinished business. The trustee who moved and seconded should be switched so that it's trustee Carter making the motion, trustee Zupan seconding. And then the second change is the adjournment time should be 9:33 and not 8:15 p.m.
Any other? Correct. All right, I'll entertain a motion to. I'll entertain a motion to accept these minutes. Changes, I'll take a second to, I'll entertain a second for those necessary changes.
Second.
Moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Grant.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
No.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
No.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment? Our question and comments will be directed by, directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter, reply to the remarks. I will answer all questions at the end of each question period from the. Please state your name when you come up.
Judy Castor. My first question, I would like to know if interim finance director Finch is bonded. I don't want to know if he's insured, I want to know if he's bonded. And if so, I would like some paperwork to support that. And if not, if I can't get that, then I do have a FOIA here to turn in to ask for it. The next thing I want to bring up is FOIAs. Mark that date down, March 8th. At, on March 15th, I received a letter saying that they needed a five-day extension. I asked for copies of minutes for ordinance review committee by trustee Linda Todd and who was on her committee and that kind of thing. I saw Mrs. Todd, trustee Todd, and I told her that I submitted a FOIA. And she said, I know, I've already turned in the paperwork for it. That was before the first five days was up. So there's no reason why I didn't get it within the five, first five days. But I let it go. And the, on the 15th of March, I got the letter asking for another five days. This morning, I made a phone call to Steve, I'm sorry, Attorney General Steve Silverman. We're on a first-name basis by now. And I let him know that as of today, I still don't have my FOIAs answered. And if a trustee turned in paperwork answering that FOIA, I want to know if she's, the FOIA clerk or whatever she calls herself, officer, is told to hold on to these FOIAs or is she totally incompetent? And I will keep contacting Mr. Silverman until I get where I want to get. The next thing is, for four years prior to you becoming mayor of Saw Village, you were a trustee. And for four years, we watched you and we, we stood by you when you fought David Hanks on the fact of asking for the trustees to pass a motion for stuff that was already done.
Time is up.
Can I finish?
Time is up.
Okay, I'll get you next week.
Thank you.
Linda Washington, first of all, I just wanted to say, I would like to know why we don't have any account payable available in the back for the residents to be able to look at the bills that's been paid. I just know that it cannot be that serious that we don't have enough money in Saw Village to run off copies of the accounts payable. The residents are already going to uproar about so much that's going on in Saw Village that's wrong. And these are their tax dollars that they're paying, these are stakeholders in the village. Why can't they have a copy of the accounts payable? We were talking, if you want to know how much money is being spent and the bills that's being paid, you have to go on the internet. You have senior citizens don't even have a computer. You have some people don't even know how to use the internet. There is no reason why there should not be a paper hard copy of the accounts payable in the back for the residents. It's just another way you all keep showing us that you don't care nothing about what we feel.
I've been a resident here since 1987. I just want to know, and I know it's none of your fault at all, but when are we going to get some drinkable water? Everybody around us has it, why can't we? Another thing I wanted to bring up was, I see more and more young kids just walking down the middle of the street. Do we have any community programs where we can start or we can implement for these kids to have something to do? And you might say, well, it's kind of expensive to get the lake water or the refined water, but it's just as expensive to get new washing machines, new refrigerators, new fixtures. So in the end, what are we saving? I know it's not none of your fault that it happened before you got in office and everything, but I wonder if we can get something started. Jesse Jackson came here before he went to jail and he was supposed to do something about it. We've been promised and promised and promised and promised. We're still spending more and more money every year for the no-account water we get. So I just want to see something get started so it can be implemented. Thank you.
First of all, I want to start with the fact that it really is a problem that we cannot get through to city hall, village hall, our hall. It is really a problem. On Monday, I found out that one of my signs, my political signs, resident got a warning ticket to remove it. So of course, I wanted to call the village hall to find out exactly what I need to do to comply. So I called code enforcement, Joe Wizwati's desk, and the mailbox is full. Really? I mean, yeah, you work three hours a day and Sharon used to work nine, and the mailbox is full. And okay, so what's your next course of action? Well, let me speak to the mayor. So I called back and I'm told that I have to speak to Mary Klopp, who's assistant. I leave a message for Mary Klopp, I still haven't gotten a phone call back. Now it's like almost nine o'clock on Tuesday, I still haven't gotten a phone call back. So obviously, if Joe Wizwati's phone is, mailbox is full, and Mary Klopp doesn't answer her answer, her answering machine, and the mayor never gets the message apparently, sometimes Tuesday maybe after seven o'clock, I'll know where I can put my sign. But right now, why am I not in compliance? Please tell me, because I will make sure that I'm in compliance and put that sign right back. That's number one. Number two, there is a lot of talk that independent candidates do not want to work with this administration. Let me just tell you on the record, that's a lie. Because I intend to work with anybody who is up at that seat. I have always worked with everybody who's been up on that seat. Because I've been a resident for 32 years, and if there's one thing I care about, it's what the people on that seat do for the residents. And I'm a resident, and I don't feel like I'm being serviced. Another thing, when are we going to get over the fact that Debbie Williams did not spend $17,000, cost the residents $17,000 because of my trip to Washington? Mr. Wizwati, who cost the village $17,000? Who kept that FOIA in court over and over and over again, knowing full well that the residents were going to have to foot that bill because the attorneys were going to answer your questions and you tweaked that FOIA over and over and over again? You changed it, and every time you changed it, the attorneys had to go back and address it to the tune of $17,000. And it wasn't my fault, because as an elected official, once that FOIA reached Saw Village, it was out of my hands. I was no longer able to respond to that FOIA, because anything I could have said or done at that time could have put Saw Village in liability. That's why the attorneys handled it. You got a problem with the $17,000? Speak to Olson and Sturbe.
Oh, that's funny.
This is kind of going to be repetitive, but I want to know where are copies of accounts payable? And is it true that the residents will no longer be allowed to view accounts payable prior to meetings? Excuse me. Number three, how can a decision like that be implemented without even bothering to consult or just talk with the residents about it? Let me see, number four, were the trustees aware that this no availability of the accounts payable was going to be implemented? And also, I'd like to know, were the trustees in disagreement with it? Are you able to say which ones were and/or why? And finally, I wanted to know, are you attempting to silence the residents and/or discourage us from participating or coming to these meetings? Because I kind of think if you do that, wouldn't that end the necessity for the meeting? Therefore, wouldn't that cut into your pocket change a little bit? So those are my questions.
Hi. So I did get a chance to talk with Radona Brown. So we did work something out, but we wanted to get everything exact for you. So I do not have everything written up at the moment. We kind of wanted to get it to, next two things, we don't want to start till after the election and everything, and just have everything in place instead of having a motion. And we don't have enough time to start next week because we wouldn't have time to promote it. So, but we do have dates, and we were going to do like every other Wednesday at night. The mommy and me program, or guardian and me program, sorry. So we do have the logistics going on, and we will have an itemized list of everything we're going to do on those days for you. And I will give those to you monthly if that's what you need. But we will give them to you guys by Friday of this week. I will have it to the front counter and then you guys can know what we're doing, okay? Thank you.
I guess maybe, Mayor, I'm not asking you this question, I guess I have to ask Joe. Is it possible to get a copy of the empty, all the empty houses that's still available in the city of Saw Village? Is it possible to get a copy of all the empty houses that are available?
So I want to talk about when somebody was mentioning how they can't get through to city hall. When I was the treasurer and I was in the back, I was in the office and Mary Klopp was taking, or somebody had called that wanted to speak to you, and your secretary entered the phone. And so when she asked, the person wanted you to call them, and she's like, yeah, okay. She was getting ready to hang up, and the people asked, don't you need my information? And she said, oh, yeah. So she just stood there, she didn't write anything down. When she hung up, I looked at her and I said, what are you doing? And she said, what? He doesn't want to talk to them. So where is the transparency? And either she's not competent enough to take the information down to give it to you or you really don't want to talk to the people. And then, how I keep saying, people in glass houses shouldn't throw stones. So people who filed bankruptcy two and three times shouldn't be talking about people whose houses are in foreclosure or don't pay their taxes or whatever. They need to learn to keep their mouth shut when they know they're doing the exact same thing. That's all I have to say for tonight. I'll be back.
My name is Nikay Thomas. I've been a resident of Saw Village for the past six years. Moved from DuPage County to Cook County. And it's very disturbing to drive down my block and see the trees and branches all in the street. My car have to replace tires because of those tree branches that belong to the city. When you look at the trees, it looks like the Asian beetle many, many years ago have attacked these trees. I drive around different suburbs and surrounding areas and see that the cities are taking care of the trees that have died, cutting them down, and I see nothing happening in Saw Village. My question is, when will we see landscaping taken care of down our blocks? Thank you.
You can tell it's, um, it's happened every, every two years. Um, in regards. No, I wasn't, I'm just making a statement. Um, in regards to being bonded, the treasurer is bonded. Okay, the treasurer is bonded, has been bonded since he was made treasurer. So by him moving into another capacity, helping the village out at the time that we need him, I don't understand that part of the question. You know, just once you're bonded and still working for the village, you're still bonded. As far as they need a FOIA, you said you never, the person said they never got a FOIA, three FOIs, and they never got their FOIs. I will look into that, because you should have, by the eighth, if you were asked for it, I'm sorry, there was an extension given. It could have been a lot of reasons why extensions were given. I don't know all of them, but I know that there are extensions given that are different, at different times for different reasons. To say that to date, no FOIs were answered, I find it hard to believe that no FOIs were As far as accounts payable, accounts payable will be released after the trustees vote on it. That's the trustee's job, is to vote on accounts payable. Once they've been voted on, yes, they'll be released to find out what they are. When you see them before they're voted on, those bills have not been paid. Bills are not paid until after they've been voted on by the board. So the accounts payable that you see is a draft. So if there, if there's something that is taken out or whatever, why should we disseminate that if it hasn't been voted on? After, just like the minutes, after it was voted on, you would get copies of the accounts payable be made. I'm not going to compete, I'll let you finish, I'll let whoever that is talking finish. The accounts payable will be disseminated after it's been, after it's been voted on to the residents and have copies will be available in the village and those that want them online, if you have your, we will put those also online. But if you need copies, the copies will be available the day after they were voted on. As far as Lake Michigan water, Lake Michigan water is, is a referendum, it's a binding referendum. When I became mayor, I had, I put a trustee in charge of that, but I will tell you this, it's got to happen, it's going to happen. The water rates will go up because we have to take care of the infrastructure that the Lake Michigan water will be part of and take care of that. We have to have a certain amount of non-leakage, which means we have to be less than 10% of our pipes leaking. That's where the infrastructure comes in, and there's a lot of items that are involved in that. So when will that come? I really couldn't give you an answer. If I told you I knew when, I would be lying, but it is a binding referendum, and it has to happen at some point. But as I stated before, when that does, and it does happen after we get everything, the water rates will go up to pay for the infrastructure repairs. And the land has to be drawn between point A and point B. As far as the programs for children, I have a application process that's been out there for quite a while for someone to come and be a part-time program director for the community center. It's been out there for a while, I haven't got but one, and this person really wasn't, didn't want to really do it, so I still have the application process still out there for someone to be a program director. That you couldn't get into village hall, and to say that a person is not capable and we're going to call names, I'm not going to engage in name calling. Again, I'm not going to answer, I'm going to let, you know, I mean, if you want to keep everybody here all night, we'll do that. But if you, I did not, I did not, and I will not engage in back and forth. When you were talking, I respected that. And if you continue to keep doing our acts that you leave out, let everybody else enjoy As far as the, um. Person that's talked about the mom and me, I need that person to see me, come up. This is more than just, than just that to bring a program like that in there, especially when it deals with kids and parents and volunteers. So it's more than just talking, we have to make sure that we have safeguards in effect. It's not, it's just, that's just what it is when you deal with, with the government. That way, we have things in place to make sure that everyone that's involved in that is on the up and up. A copy of the empty houses in the village, I'm sure that that shouldn't be a problem. I don't know what, why, there was a problem with that, but there should not be a problem with the empty houses list. We do have a copy of the empty houses list, and I don't know if there, when you say empty houses and available, I'm not sure about that, because it could be empty and not available. I don't know if there is such a list, but there's a list of empty houses. As far as the trees and branches in the street, yes, those bore, the ash trees went through a process, I think it's like the third year now, where Emerald Ash Bore killed all Emerald trees, ash trees in the village. And right now, we have two or 300 of them. And every, every year, we try to, to work with and get those trees taken down. We had some help last year by with Cook County to do some of them on Saw Trail. Well, the manpower dictates that we can only do so many, so often, because some of those trees are pretty tall. As far as the branches made in the street, we see those, we hopefully picking those up on a daily basis. I'm glad you brought that to my attention. I do drive around a lot to look, and the person that's involved in doing that is here, so I'm sure they wrote that down to, to look into that. And I didn't get which street you were on, but I'm sure after, if you're going to be here after the meeting, you can let me know what street that is that you're on, and we can take a look at that too, to make sure that, that those trees are not eating anything going down. Because we did have some windstorms, and it broke a lot of branches in the streets and in the process now of trying to pick those up. But if they missed that street and it's still out there, needs to know that. I appreciate you bringing that to us and letting us know about that, because a lot of times, things are being missed. That being said, we'll go to the reports, the mayor's report. First item, we have a bed opening for the. First item, we have a bed opening for the elevated rising tank. We had one bed to be brought in. This is the second bed that we, and this is the only bed that we got up there. It came the second time. There was a bed the first time. So I'll open this bed. Okay, this bid is from Great American Insurance Company. And this is, um... Bond amount. 10% of total bid included, okay. The bid is for $8,408. They have insurance writer. The cover letter was included. Yeah, I stand corrected. The contract of neighbors McGuire Iron Incorporated in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And the bond amount again is for $8,408. They do have an insurance writer. There's a statement of understanding and development included. There's an inscription included. References included, developer team experience. That's included. The amount of the bond check. All right, then, um... The amount of the actual bid is $84,080. And turn this over to our... There's a, there's a, um, bond for it, yes. You have a bond for it, um... All right, we'll give this to whoever. And next. Item have a resolution. Everybody probably wondering why the police are here. It's not for people being on the road. So you won't have to feel that way. It's a res, it's a resolution. And, um, the person that we're talking about, could you please come up? And that's Mr. Detective Sergeant Robert Grossman.
Yes, sir. Um, first of all, before I read this... Excuse me, before I read this, I just want to make something.
And read it out, say it out.
I just want to say, I've known, um, Mr. Grossman since he's been here. I've never gotten kind, I was never in contact with him on the other side. But I just wanted to tell everybody that this person is one of the most dedicated people that we have in our police department. Please, of course, if you ever dealt with him, he's very methodical in how he does his work. I've watched him. My people may not be happy to hear about it, but he does his job. He doesn't mince words. He'll tell you right off the bat, um, what he feels. And he does his job. He's done a great job in the village. He's very thorough. So I'm hoping that we can fill his shoes. But I do know that when you give him a case or give him something to do, he, he takes care. He takes care of it until it's done. He's like a bloodhound when it comes to trying to solve cases. That being said, in honor of the retired detective sergeant, Robert Grossman, whereas detective sergeant, Robert Grossman was appointed to the position of the police officer with the Saw Village Police Department on March 27, 1998. He was appointed to the position of detective for Saw Village in 2003, and then appointed to the position of detective sergeant, April 25, 2017. Whereas detective sergeant, Robert Grossman during his tenure with the Saw Village Police Department served as a patrol officer, field training officer, juvenile officer, evidence technician. While serving as a detective for Saw Village, he was certified as a lead homicide investigator, a role which he used to solve numerous violent crimes and homicides in Saw Village and throughout the South Suburb. Whereas detective sergeant, Robert Grossman has attained numerous professional milestones. Detective Sergeant Grossman became an active member of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, working tirelessly to renew child predators from our neighborhoods. In October 2007, while serving as lead homicide investigator as a member of the South Suburban Major Crime Task Force, he was awarded the Menchurist Award by Cook County Sheriff, Thomas Darby. Therefore, be it resolved by Mayor Derek Burgess and the village board of Saw Village that we do extend our sincere and help, I'm sorry, heartfelt gratitude to Detective Sergeant Robert Grossman for his years of service to our residents and the staff at the village of Saw Village. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be given to Detective Sergeant Grossman and will be placed in our file this date, March 26, 2019. Faithfully submitted, Derek Burgess, Mayor of Saw Village. Like I said, this, this gentleman has done a lot. Um, we can go be solely missed. Um, I'm glad to see our officers came out and did support. Um, but first like that you can't, you can't sign, you can't, um, so recruit for something like this. Has to begin, you should do something like this. The committee did that, and I really appreciate that. Again, thanks so very much. Officer, did you want to come take a picture with your, with your, um, tech? He's, he's a retired guy. Don't be jealous. He, he put his hands in. You're jealous, huh?
Good luck having a good time.
Thank you to, um, Saw Village Mayor and his office. Thank you. There will be some, um, there is some cake in the, in the senior center. So I guess that's where they're headed to. But, um, hopefully, there'll be some left over after the meeting, and it's a big cake. So feel free, after the meeting, go by and give your congratulations to Sergeant Grossman, and then have some cake.
Fourth, um, village clerk report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to be before you very long. However, I do want everyone that's here, all of our department heads, all of our trustees, to remember April 23rd is coming on. And what does April 23rd mean for all of us? It's a board meeting, yes, but it's Student Government Day, more so. So on that, we'll be shadowing you, who will actually read your report. You will prepare the report and get, and email it to me for certain by the Wednesday prior to that meeting. I believe that's the 16th or the 17th. Trustees, unlike last time, we're gonna make it real nice, quick and easy. When it's time for a vote, you will respond to the vote. Not the young people. You will not have to tell them what to say because that was a little awkward and we sort of lost some stuff there. So you will respond to the vote. They will be giving your report. And their report, trustees hear me, the report that they give will not be, I have no reports. Okay? Because if you don't give me a report, I'm gonna make one up for you. Okay? Our youngsters will be given a report. I would rather it be a valid report, but I promise you, it would be something that's relating to your responsibility. Okay? Then on that Friday, no, not that Friday, but that Thursday, we will be having a luncheon here for those youngsters that took part in the Student Governance Day here, as well as the one that we had a week or so ago over at the school district. At that point in time, we will give them little certificates. We will provide them lunch. You are more than welcome, as always, to come and be in attendance with us. There's something else that I need to be telling you about that day. Oh, I know it's very important. On that day, years ago, we used to give the youngsters a tour of the municipality. We didn't do that last year. Well, they wanted. So we will be touring the water tower. We will be touring the police department, and we will be touring this facility. Joe, I think you did a fantastic job of being a tour guide last year. So I'm gonna ask you be the tour guide again this year for, uh, the municipal center. And I'm certain, Chief, you will just really appreciate having an opportunity to share them, show them around. I don't know who would do the water tower. Oh, they do the fire department, a fire station as well. So I just need all of you guys to just get engaged. I'll give you the timelines. We're only looking at like 15 minutes at each one of your places because we know that we need you to get back to work as soon as possible. Okay? Are there any questions where that's concerned? You're also invited, if you would really love to come, and be a chaperone on the next day, the 26th, for the 7th and 8th grade dinner dance. And when we say dinner dance, we're talking a formal dinner dance. So you're more than welcome, if you have a youngster that is, you know, in that age group. We look forward to seeing them all doozied up and everything and looking good. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you. Treasurer's report, Mr. Anthony Finch.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good. Mr. Mayor, Board, Madam Clerk, before I go into my report, I want to take a moment to go outside of Robert's rules and order and allow myself a point of courtesy. Since I've been in this interim director position, I feel like not necessarily myself, but this position has been coming under attack. I heard a few questions tonight that I'm going to address as the interim financial director, as well as a professional. You guys, if you know me and don't know me, I came on as a treasurer back in October, which I raised my hand to uphold my duties as a financial individual. That was the second time that I ever upheld my hand. First time was in the Army. And in military, you uphold the oath to protect foreign and domestic individuals or countries. The same thing applies with my concern when it comes to finances. I don't, I'm not beholden to none of the trustees or the mayor. But when it's implied that I might be doing something underhanded, I do take offense to that. Because one thing that I do stand by is my integrity. When you question, since I've been here the last month, I've had about six to seven people, including attorneys, question about my bond. I find that's kind of ironic because I want to ask, because I'm the type of person, when you ask me something and you point at me, remember there's three fingers pointing back. So when you ask me about bonding and all that stuff, it's amazing because back in November, I brought a couple of issues to the pitching board that still to this day have not been addressed by their attorneys. It's interesting to me that, from what I can tell, prior financial directors that have been here way more than I have, have not been asked those same questions. I have no problem answering any questions. As far as transparency, I'm all about transparency. This is my fourth village that I've worked in. I'm not here because I need the money to take care of my family, pay my son college. So please don't think anything like that. I'm here because I've done a great job in other municipalities, to the point that even people in this village that I work in here has gone to my current employer and asked them about what I do and what I've done for that particular village. I didn't run away from it, didn't care about it, because I know what I've done. I'm all about results. That's what the military taught me, and that's what I still do to this day. As I've asked when I first set up here, you have to give me opportunity. This is not simple math, one plus one equals two. This is not even algebra. This is geometry. And it's very complicated, and it's going to take some time. Now, you guys have valid, valid questions. I always have questions. Since I've been here, I've brought certain things to the mayor, attention with current certain invoices, that they were small, but nonetheless, it was money that was spent that was unnecessary. With respect to accounts payable list, yes. I sent out an email to the trustees informing them that I'm making that decision to change. They can change, no. The reason I made that decision, because I function on a simple premise, keep it simple and efficient. Having an AP list that everybody could not sit and explain to me, the list, didn't make sense to me. As I stated before, why would I give you a list, whether it be the board, the mayor, or the residents, that I cannot articulate? As I've stated before, whatever I put in your hands, I don't need it in front of me to tell you what's in it. So I did make that decision, and I asked the mayor, can I not give the AP list out? Because one, as the mayor alluded to earlier, it's a draft. And the last thing that needs to come up here is say, you guys approved something that did not get approved. So the mayor said, well, once we approve it, we'll make copies and put it online. So that was something that I thought would be beneficial, because there is a process. I was also challenged first a couple of days here, why we have eight hundred-plus home estimated ratings? Why we have two hundred-some homes not on the turnoff list, I mean, not shut off? Those are questions that should have been answered and addressed long before I got here. But I don't run away from any challenge, and I never will. So I took on accountability to get, address that. In the month of February and part of April, I mean, March, we have cut off close to two hundred homes with the work with IT as well as Public Works Department. And there's still more work to be done. Last Tuesday, people talked about the customer service at the front desk. And I asked you guys the same question on my ass now. Let's be honest, everybody's going to have a bad day. Do people sometime be rude? Yes, but it's a two-way street. Those young ladies up front are doing the best they can with the lack of training that they did not receive. Though now they are getting the training, they get processed, and procedures have been in place, so the things are moving forward. But it takes time. Two things that I know in my forty-ninth year of living, people don't like change, and people don't like accountability. That's what I'm going to bring as a finance director, whether I'm part-time or full-time. If you want to know how I operate, go to any mayor that I've worked with, whether it be Robbins, South Village, Phoenix, or Linwood. And everybody, from the smallest worker up to the mayor, will tell you, they might not like what I did, but at the end of the day, I got the results for their residents. So that's all I'm asking. Give me the opportunity, be fair about it. And if you didn't ask the people prior to me the same question and did not hold them to the same level that you hold in me, ask yourself why. It's going to change, and a lot of people may not like it, but it will get better. And no, the taxpayer would not feel like they're losing their money. No, it's not about printing out copies that's going to make the village broke. It's about simple and efficiency. With that, that's all I have to say, Mayor, and I'll go into my report. Thank you. Trustees, you guys have, and Mayor and Clerk, you have in front of you the AP list. And part of that change that I just spoke of was, when I got here, it was said that the trustees wasn't having enough time to review invoices. So what I had my staff do, we are providing the AP list to the trustees a week prior to the council meeting. So they have a week to review. I have a file in my office or in the other young lady's office that they can see any invoices that's on this particular list. No invoice, any bill that's on this list, there is an invoice to go with it. Otherwise, I do not put it on this list. With that being said, last week, I gave them a list. The list was a hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars. We, if you turn to the second page, we have added some additional invoices. Those invoices was enforced that we went through our accounts payable system and the bills that we have, and we had to add them on for this cycle. The invoice that you're looking at that was added all relates to insurance. Most of the insurance that we have in Village, South Village, are paid in advance. So like Blue Cross Blue Shield, even though it's March, that bill is paying for April personnel. So when I, not knowing that, because again, I have to get my arms wrapped around the process and procedure that's done here prior to me, I didn't know that. So I had the young lady add Blue Cross Blue Shield, Dearborn National, Standard Life. Those are insurance bills that we are paying now that would pay for April premium. The other bill that you see on here is Insure One Source. The janitor came and spoke to you guys last Tuesday in reference to the down payment for the insurance that covered the equipments and building of the village. That's where that seventy-five thousand and some change come from. The last bill that I had to add was for the treasurer, the I Doc, Illinois I Doc. That's fifty thousand dollars. We just got that invoice, and it was a past due invoice, so we went ahead and put that on there. So I Doc would not have to call you guys looking for their payment. So in total, we added an additional two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to last year accounts payable list. But like I said, those bills, if you would like to look at them, they're in my office, and we can review them, and at that time, you guys can make a decision. The second thing that I want to bring to your attention, at the committee in the whole, we, one of the residents talked about on the current postcard. It says that going forward around July, I think it is, there will be no more shut-off notice. And I addressed that to say that one of the things we're trying to do is go to a standard page water bill. And the main reason was that the young lady that does the water bill right now, she spent two days, eight hours a day preparing water bill. Waste of taxpayer dollars, I think that's a waste of taxpayer dollar because it's inefficient, and it's a no-brainer. I can have my fourteen-year-old daughter do that, sit there and rip papers apart, take them in the bin to Chicago Heights. Hopefully, they don't get lost in Chicago Heights. So one of the form that you have in front of you is a sample of the water bill. The cost is less than four hundred dollars a month for the vendor to take care of all that, and that's something we can discuss if you guys decide to go with that. But the bill is going to be a letter-sized bill, have current month, prior month on it. But the thing that I think is big, is beneficial, other than the fact that it's come in an envelope so the resident don't lose it or misplace it, is that you can put additional information into the envelope about business that's going on in South Village. So that's, that's that one. The final thing that I want to discuss, I sat down with Mr. Joe Viswadi last week to get an understanding of the money from Illinois Housing Authority with respect to abandoned houses and boarders and grass cut. As of right now, we have, oh, I just missed this. We have received or put out to receive back for them a little bit under twenty thousand dollars. However, the village have already spent close to twenty-nine thousand dollars. So we're waiting on additional roughly nine thousand, I mean, twenty-nine thousand we've already spent, and we're waiting on additional nine thousand dollars to come back. So overall, we have not used up the whole seventy-five thousand dollars. It's a year-to-year grant, and you do have to reapply. So one of the things that my office is tasked with is making sure we pull all the invoices that was done within the last year to give to Mr. Joe so that he can make sure he applies to Illinois Department of Housing and asks for a rebate. Other than that, I'm still working on revising a cash flow so that you guys can see what money is still, is out there available at a point in time. Again, I don't like giving information from three, four months ago because it's stale information. I just believe in giving it on today, a point in time. So hopefully, I will have that in the next two weeks. And at the end of that, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Question and comment. Mr. Finch, I want to say I really appreciate you because I sat down and talked and asked a bunch of questions about information that we have been getting since I've been here. And you indicated that, you know, a lot of stuff I was giving was misinformation, you know? So all I want to say is that we have been saying that for years, that the information that we give did not jive with what we know, you know? So we were getting information, we were going on that information. So my thing is that, don't get upset with us, period, because we were giving that information, and the information was wrong. It's as simple as that, you know? Second thing I want to talk about is that I've heard this before, that we have always asked about who was bonded because there was an issue with the former finance director. So there's nothing new. They're going to ask that until they get an answer, you know? So I don't want you to be offended about that. That's something that we have always asked about. Second thing, when you, when we get information and we want to ask a question about it and it doesn't make sense to us, it won't make sense to residents if we don't ask the question. So we have to come in there and ask you that particular question. So I don't want you to get offended about that either.
And you're right, trustee. I don't, maybe you missed an inter. I don't get offended because I think, I've been doing accounting for twenty-plus years, and not bragging or boasting, I think I'm very good at what I do. I know I have results that are proven and tested by vendors, not elected officials, not residents, from vendors and people that I've worked with in the past. So all I'm asking is, if you have a question, let me understand what the question is. But it seems like I've been asked questions that it can't be explained to me. So if you, if someone asked me a question that they can't explain to me, how can I give an answer? That's why I said it's not simple one plus one, two. So if you ask a question, as you experienced last week, I'm not going to run from it. I'm going to say, give me time, let me look into it, let me find out what I can do. But I'm going to give you the answer. That's all I'm asking. As far as the short time that I'm here, there's a lot of moving parts that I'm grabbing my hands around. Like in a couple of weeks, I'm going to work on a budget. Before I give you the budget, there's numbers and stuff that I have to give for this past fiscal year. Otherwise, I'm giving you a bunch of junk. And as I explained to you last week, I don't work from a budget on expense. I work from what's actually coming in as revenue. That's how I run my household. My wife can't go out and buy a million-dollar house if we ain't got million-dollar money to pay for it. So that's the premise that I base my thing on. So that's all I'm asking. Ask me the question, but allow me the time to dig into it and say, okay, this, this, and this. Like when you and I talk about Republic, I explain how that process works. And I think we got a good relationship and understanding. That makes sense. Now going forward, I can give you the numbers that you're looking for to tie back and be a checks and balance.
Yeah, that's, that's what we've been asking for since day one. So, you know, we'll, we'll work on getting that.
Questions.
Questions together, you know, I have questions. But I appreciate you, and that's, that's what I'll say. But I have another question. You indicated that twenty-nine thousand dollars was for the grass cutting, I do believe.
Yes.
Twenty-nine thousand, okay. Now, the actual grant was for seventy-five thousand.
Yes.
Okay. Twenty-nine thousand was paid out of that, even though I know it's a reimbursable grant. Can you hold that money? What, that'd be like, what is that, forty-five thousand? Can we hold that money for the next year or can we just lose it?
Twenty-nine thousand is what we spent.
To reimburse us.
Uh-uh. Twenty-nine thousand was what we spent to maintain the property.
Right.
Only nineteen, nineteen thousand is what came back to us. So we still got another nine thousand roughly coming back to us from Idaho. So once we get the nine thousand dollars, your question is, and it's in simple math, let me make it thirty. So once we get the four thirty thousand dollars back, your question is, what's going to happen to the other forty-five thousand dollars? The forty-five thousand dollars stays with Idaho until we send them forty-five thousand dollars for invoices. If we don't send them forty-five thousand dollars for invoicing, we don't get forty-five thousand. Then the next fiscal year, I mean, next calendar year, we got to apply again for a whole new seventy-five thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, that's, that's what we, we've been asking for, questions like that, you know? So yeah, I appreciate the answer.
You're welcome.
You know, so we can move on. That's the end of my comment.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
No, for this trustee bureau, you mentioned that form. Could you tell me like what, what was missing from the form? Because that's, that's like saying that, I think I heard you say, if I'm correct or wrong, that we were given a lot of misinformation.
We, I had a whole stack of paper that I gave, and I showed Finch some of, excuse me, Mr. Finch, some of the information that was given to us during that time. A lot of that stuff did not jive. Because that's when I looked at it, and I said, oh, this is not right. This, this, this does not make sense. I, I got a, I got a whole stack of that paper, and I can show it to you. You know, and I showed him a couple of things, and Finch came in and he said, oh, well, this is not right. This is, this goes this, this goes that. That's, that's the conversation we had, you know? So I'm not saying I was making up this stuff. I made, I asked questions because I didn't understand what was going on. And the information that was provided to us was not accurate.
So the information that was given to us by the finance, the previous finance director?
By former finance director, you know? So I, I'm just saying, you know, how can you make an informed decision if you're getting the wrong information? And I, and I've talked to you about that before, too. So, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't sound right, you know? If it's not sounding right to me, I'm going to ask.
Can I just make a comment? Why do I feel like this isn't mine? But anyway, given, given that we have the addition of the seventy-five thousand for Insure One Source in the accounts payable, I feel like we need to approve accounts payable after we vote on Insure One Source tonight, then, Mayor.
So you want me to move?
Accounts payable.
Aye.
Before accounts payable, right?
So you want accounts payable to be aye?
Yeah, I feel like we need to do that last.
Any more questions? Okay. Mr. Finch, did you have anything further for the next report for Department of Finance and Administration?
No, that was it, thank you.
Thank you. Fire Department?
Thank you.
Captain, sent away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fire Department responded to twenty calls for service for the period from March seventh through March twenty-first. We had no serious incidents in town. However, we did assist our neighbors with structural fires in Ford Heights and Chicago Heights. Fire Department will be hosting our annual pancake breakfast with Easter Bunny on Palm Sunday, April fourteenth, from eight AM until one PM. Our annual golf outing will be Saturday, June twenty-ninth, in Lincoln Oaks Golf Course. Registration begins at eleven. We are looking for sponsors and golfers if flyers are available at the fire station. I'd also like to comment that Fire Department was intending to be here tonight to honor Mr. Grossman, Detective Sergeant Grossman. However, they had calls for the past two hours. So that's why they were unavailable here. So on behalf of the Fire Department, we do extend our congratulations to Detective Sergeant Grossman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Captain. Would that be Fire Department? Captain, was that the fire that's right off Square A four on the fourth of Thursday?
There was a fire that came in behind Park Lane by the railroad tracks, right over here down Torrance. Ludwig did assist with that. As they were coming off of that call, they got another guest they called on two-twenty-first. So I just got a phone call a few minutes ago. They were heading back to the station.
Thank you. Police Department Chief, Al White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Village Board. For the period between March thirteenth through March twenty-sixth, the Police Department received forty-seven calls for service. During that same time period, the Police Department made eleven arrests. The only other thing I have left in the report, trustee Zupan will touch on later. Just a reminder of our new community policing meeting every Thursday at six o'clock. Every third Thursday, every third Thursday at six o'clock. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Captain, close.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to repeat a few items here from the last report because we have not gotten to them yet, but I just want to make sure everybody understands what's going on. At seventeen-seventy-one, two-twenty-third Street, we had replaced a fire hydrant over there. During the process, we had ripped out a culvert under a driveway. With the weather being as wet as it's been lately, the area is so saturated with water running down the street, we have to wait for a little more dry spell, but we will get to it still. Staff also has been out on the east side of town and the south side of town, pothole patching. Please be patient. We have a lot of patch work to do. The sweeper is in front of the patching crew, and they are going around beforehand so we can remove some of the debris that is in the roadway. This will also include some of the small branch debris that has been blowing out of the trees. I asked that residence again from last report, I mentioned that we're not going to be able to get out and do any kind of a pickup before May first, which is our normal pickup. It's actually May sixth. So at this point, I would ask if they could help us out a little bit by just stacking the branches that are in their yard into the parkway. I don't believe there's any tickets going to be issued at this point because it is from storm damage, and we do not have any time right now to send a crew out. We have, we're very much behind at this point. The next item, our lift truck, this is one of the other items that we're behind on. This would also help with the trees, our streetlights, and some other issues we have. But the lift truck we have had to go back into the shop. As of Monday, we called, they still have no status on this. They're trying to find out electrical problem on the boom itself, and that is a safety issue, so we cannot use that until it's repaired. We are working at the Village Hall with some small jobs because we're changing over to some soap dispensers different to save some money, and some toilet paper holders. The soap dispensers are added, and the paper holders will be added later. There is no cost to the village. The equipment is free. Asphalt and concrete, we're getting into the beginning of our season here. We do have a little bit at the end. We're trying to get some of this started, but it looks like with the weather now, we're not going to be able to do anything with the asphalt till the plant opens. That won't be until about the fifteenth of April. And the concrete work, we cannot put on a basically floating stage, which is the mud right now that we have. So as things go on in the next couple of weeks, we're looking for hopefully some drought weather. We will be getting into those areas. Landscaping, landscaping of old dig operations, anything that Public Works has dug in the last year, we're starting to plan out for those landscape jobs. Some of these might get landscaped without the asphalt or concrete work to be started because we're going to try in two weeks to get some dirt here and start putting the dirt down. So at least the grass will start to grow in, and then the small amount of damage we will do for the concrete and asphalt work will be minor repairs afterwards. Also, we, we had ordered some mulch. We have received ninety yards of that PlaySafe mulch. This is for the parks and the equipment around the parks for the safe zones. We'll be receiving the other half of that order on April fourth. Repairs were also made. I left a report last, two weeks ago about the well three. We had an airstripper failure go down, had a pipe snap, and that pipe had to be repaired. That pipe has been repaired, and the station is back online. Very important issue we had throughout the winter here, we've had, we had a couple of major water main breaks. We found one, it was in the field on the east side of town. We found that located during the cold weather snap. We had a water main break out there. That has been repaired. The fire hydrant at seventeen-seventy-one, two-twenty-third Street, that one gave away. That was a large amount of water usage there. The other day, we were called Carol Lane, roughly seventeen forty-four, two-seventeen forty-four Carol Lane. It's sectional houses over there. They have fire service lines in them. There's a vacant house over there. Appears that the water was running from the fire service line, which is a two-inch fire service line, for quite a while, and nobody had reported it. And then one day, somebody finally called with water running behind a house. We went to this address, and sure enough, it was flowing for quite a while. Due to these repairs, we were quite high on the water consumption per day. Now we're back down to our normal, I would say, normal time usage, which is about six-hundred-and-fifty thousand per day. The last, let's see here, what do we got here? The last salt order, we've been kind of behind on the salt orders, not that we need it right now, but the vendor was behind on at least two of the last of the three orders that we have, we received. We're waiting on the third order. That should be here tomorrow. And then as of the four hundred tons that we contracted, we only have to have another twenty ton, which is one more semi, and that had been placed. We only have to purchase eighty percent of our salt this year. We don't need to go to the hundred percent. So there's definitely a cost savings. And again, the branches, if there's a location that there's an excessive amount of branches on the road or large branches, and somebody needs help with that, please call the Village Hall with an address, and we will get to that as quickly as we can. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Development? Trustee Zupan? Yes, we have time to vote. The directors are...
All right, on his behalf, I'm reading this tonight. Our trustees has before them tonight three ordinances, abating property taxes for tax increment financing bonds, series two thousand A.
Did you have that come?
Go ahead. Go ahead. It should be on.
Two thousand A, it doesn't sound like it's made. Two thousand B, two thousand eight, and two thousand nine. Our village's financial advisor, Kane McKenna, advises us there are sufficient funds on deposit to make the debt service payments in addition to the reserve redemption fund of over three million on deposit with amalgamated. Should the village board choose not to abate these bonds, the property taxes would be levied on all of the homeowners and not just the tenants in the Tiff District. It is the recommendation of Kane McKenna that the board vote to approve the abatements on these bonds, which is done year after year. The board also has before, for consideration tonight, amendment to the village's sign ordinance that will allow for electronic information wall signs and monument signs by governmental buildings, which will include villages, schools, libraries, and churches within residential areas. Such signs will only be permitted to be in use from six AM until ten PM. The reason for the change is to alleviate the need for variance for government and church entities and the additional cost to the village for such hearings. The board also will be taking action to approve the two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan this evening. This is the culmination over a year's work and many hours of community input, meetings, and community events. He is proud to have played a role in this plan for Sock Village, which will take our community into the next twenty years, providing a clearer picture of our pathway to progress. Staff has completed the data collection for vacant homes in Sock Village. He's pleased to report that since two thousand seventeen, the number of vacant homes has decreased from four hundred and forty-three to three hundred and thirty-eight as of our most recent evaluation this month. We clearly have a lot of work ahead of us. We do not have anything in a quote-unquote list form, and staff will be working to develop a proper vacant home list, and that will be completed sometime in April. All of our data will be sent to ProChamps for follow-up in getting those properties registered within their system. A staff report will be provided to the trustees with respect to vacant homes. Finally, Maggie Jar, our staff planner and the director, would like to schedule a special goal-setting meeting with the members of the village board and zoning plan commission on a Saturday in April. We want to keep the momentum of the comprehensive plan going forward as we work on implementation. Details will be forthcoming. That concludes his report.
Thank you.
Got a comment? Got a comment? I don't know. I guess you're listening. But you asked for, we're going to abate the bonds for two oh two, two oh two A and B, and two oh eight and two oh nine. Now, I understand that, and I know, Mr. Finch, you have to be patient, but I asked for a detailed ledger on what's going on with the bonds. I like to know the bottom line. I understand they say, they tell us that there's enough money in there, but saying and seeing is two different things. So I would like to see a report that shows the detailed ledgers for two oh eight, two oh two A, two oh two B, two oh eight, and two oh nine bond series that we're finna get ready to abate. Secondly, second of all, Joe indicated that there has been a decrease in vacant homes from four forty-three to three thirty-eight. Now, I would like to know, there's a hundred and five vacant homes that apparently has got back on the rolls. I'd like to know where they at, when did they come back on the rolls, and how much revenue are we going to get? Because somebody, eventually, since two seventeen, twenty seventeen, somebody got some revenue for this, and it's not reflected in, you know, what we getting in revenue and what we getting, nor is it reflected in the amount of billing. But then again, my data was wrong, as I understand it. So I would like to know where these one hundred and five houses that you guys are talking about. And, and you said you're going to develop, the data's already there, you're going to develop a list, a proper vacancy list. If the data's there, how come you just can't print it out? I've asked for a vacancy list. I haven't been able to get it. I asked for February fifth, six, I verbally asked it for you again. I have yet to get that. But I understand other trustees have the vacancy list. So why does some trustees have it and other people don't? So again, I want to know where the hundred and five, the copy of the vacancy list, and also want some detailed ledgers on all these bonds. If we got a sufficient amount to pay out these bonds, then we should be able to see, go in there and see, well, we got a million dollars, we could, you know, abate that. We'd like to see some, some financial records. And that's the end of my question. I'll send you a memo so you might get it. So I just like to know, you know, where our financial dollars are.
Any other questions? Okay. Item B? Reports and trustees, public services remaining, trustee Bernard Bureau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I talked to Mr. Finch this week, and I got a lot of information, and I got a lot of about finance. And one thing that we noticed is that I can't do anything with the finance unless I know how much money was there. And Mr. Finch is working on getting some reports together, so maybe at that time, I'll be able to give somebody some information. But we need some reports on what, what's going on, especially with the, one of my missions was when I do public service is to find out how much it was going to cost in order to, you know, to repair replacements of the infrastructure, certain areas, stuff like that. Can't do that without knowing how much money we got there. As I understand it from last time, the finance director said I need to talk to the trustees, so I put up IRF, IRFP, and didn't go anywhere. And then also told them where they can get the money. And of course, the former finance director said we didn't have any money. So, you know, you can't really do anything unless you know where the money is, you know? So that's my point. So we, we need to talk about where the money is and where I can get it from. Yeah, I already gave them, you know, the IRFP and the cost, how much it costs for the IRFP. But, you know, that's, that's another thing, you know, in mind. But he asked the question, I'm answering it. That's my report.
The IRFP is a request for a proposal.
I asked, that's part of my report, and I'm talking, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, you interrupting, this is my time. I'm telling you what's going on in my report. When you, when I finish that, then you can ask me questions.
No, that's okay.
Okay, fine, I think so. Anyway, to keep going, I have been tasked to find out certain things we need to do in order to get the infrastructure repaid. I can't do that unless I know how much money is out there. I have asked Robinson Engineering and also the Public Works Director to find out just what we need out there, like the water, fire hydrants, and all that sort of stuff. We, we could have a dollar amount if I was given that information, okay? Since I'm not getting any information, I can't give any information. So I'm just saying, it's a little crazy on here, and we're not trying to, you know, give you hard time because that we're just not getting funding for that, you know, for anything, so. And then another thing is that I talked to one of your, the young ladies at the front, and I asked for comments of the shut-off list. She told me that she couldn't give me the list because the mayor said I couldn't have it. So, anyway, the mayor said I couldn't. The mayor said I couldn't give it. And as you can see, I asked you for this first, and you gave it to the person, and they said they couldn't get it. So those are the kind of things that I have to do. We can't get the information. Huh? Okay, I appreciate it, you know? So, I mean, the, the thing is that we have been working hard to get information for residents about information.
Could you use the mic?
Hello? I guess I'm kind of lost. When you say infrastructure, finance related to infrastructure, even if I gave you, let's say, a million dollars hypothetically, that doesn't necessarily mean it's enough to get infrastructure done.
I know.
So I guess my question is two, it's two-fold. Wouldn't we need, shouldn't your report be based on the cost of infrastructure? And then we say, well, we have the money throughout the village, because that could be some MFT fund, which as you know is restricted. That could be some potential grant money fund. So even if I give you a number and say we got a million dollars, it might not be sufficient to do what needs to be done. So it's like, to me, I think it's a tandem.
I agree with you, but if I come to you and I say, well, okay, I would like to get, say, forty fire hydrants done, okay? I know I don't have that much money, okay? So you come in and say, well, okay, I got enough to do twenty. We're meeting in lines right there. So, but without me knowing how much money.
And that, and part of that process is, will we get ready to do the budget?
You all's conversations you can have doing business hours. To go back and forth, but your question is an answer, this question is an answer, back and forth, this is a business meeting. So if you have a question, trustee, I mean, you said you come in, but to go back and forth, we have other business to take care of. You, you still have other things to vote on, you still have other committees to, um, to get a report. But if you're going to go back and forth, back and forth with business, they ask this, they ask that question, that can be taken care of through any business hours, Mr. Finch is here on Thursday, Friday. You know that, all right, we can get that. But to do this right now here at this meeting, it doesn't make sense.
Okay, like, like I said, I'm doing my public service report, and I can ask questions whatever. Mayor does not get to me when I'm supposed to ask questions. Anyway, I have a question and about the way we're going to finance this particular infrastructure. And I know we supposed to, it will be a more lengthy meeting, but I'm trying to give you some ideas and kind of things that I have been asking for since May, you know? About the finance and infrastructure. I would, you know, appreciate it.
Just to mail, email, what time, one week, Thursday or Friday?
Right, yeah, you know, so I just wanted to know when you're going to be available, that's all, you know?
Thank you.
Yes, we're told because to be perfectly founded, you know, we shouldn't have a war, but this is out of war. You are the best appointment for a board meeting.
Oh, you, you guys are telling me what I can, can I do during a meeting? Oh, okay. Okay, thanks though, Mr. Finch, my pleasure. So as you guys can see, they only want certain people knowing certain things around here, and you can't ask any questions. And that's all out of point, all out of point. Yes, it is.
Budgeting, I guess. Budget and finance, trustee, right?
I didn't say I was finished. I didn't say I was finished.
I'll pose your approval.
You didn't ask?
But I'm happy to ask.
Okay. Anyway, uh, as, as far as the list for, um, uh, that Joe said he's going to, uh, develop for us, I would like a copy of the vacancy list, okay? Which I've been trying to get to, uh, get from him as a trustee, and we can't get it. So I'd like to know why we can't get that information, it's public information. So that's the end of that report.
Are you through with your report?
I do believe it.
Okay. Are you through with your report? Okay, budget and finance, trustee Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, last Wednesday, I had a budget and finance committee meeting, and we went over a proposal that I, uh, worked with the board to, I mean, worked with my committee to, uh, that I'm about to bring to the board, based on the expected revenue from the, uh, new gas and wash going on through ninety-four on South Trail. Um, so I'll probably present that to the, uh, board next week, we can discuss at the committee meeting, then hopefully we can vote on it, uh, the week after. And that's all I have.
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, trustee, uh, Grant, uh, is it part of your committee's duty to, if a resident asks to provide the balance of, of a particular fund? Is, is that something you do? Is that something that's available?
If I have that fund, I will give it. If I have the balance, I'll give it. If I don't, I'll find out.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Um, Housing and Government Relations Trustee Tate. Or, or Committee Trustee Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the ordinance review committee will meet on April eighth, here in the Rotunda, at six P M. That ends my report, but I have a comment. I wanna address, um, the resident that, uh, was talking about the FOIAs. And it has to do with one that was submitted on March eighth. I received that FOIA on March twelfth, is when I received it, which was like a Tuesday night. Now, I was here on Monday. So at that time, the next day I came in to provide the information, the FOIA was not timestamped. And at that time, I was asked, well, do you need five more days? They said, no, I don't. I then, on that Thursday, which is the day before it was actually due, provided the information. So I want to let you know that, yes, I did provide the information. Why they needed another five days, I don't know, but I did comply with the five days. And that ends my comment.
I'm gonna say it one more time. I'm asking that the audience please refrain from outbursts. Public Safety Committee, that's fine, trustee, that's fine.
I'm gonna start off first with reading, uh, Director Vavriks' report. He wasn't here at the time because he got called out for a call, and he actually did have a report, but, uh, nobody read it at the time. So I'm gonna start with, um, letting, uh, that be, uh, read. So first, he wanted to thank Detective Sergeant Grossman for his services to the police department, wish him many, um, happy years of retirement. And then from the time span of March twelfth through the twenty-fourth, emergency management responded to ten calls of service. That included four fire alarms, a rubbish fire, an auto accident, and then several assists, including two to South Chicago Heights Fire Department for an apartment building fire, a garage fire, one assist to Ford Heights for a house fire, and one to Crete for a fire alarm. He also reported that earlier this month, he attended a pipeline safety training class and received a certificate of completion, and that concluded his report for this evening. Onto, uh, public safety directly, just to report that our next committee meeting will be next Wednesday, the third, that will be here at six P M. in the Rotunda. And again, just, um, to remind everybody, our first chat with the chief session will be Thursday, April eighteenth, again, here in the Rotunda at six P M. Um, and then, my comment, um, just directed to trustee Brewer, uh, I'm not really sure I understand what vacant home lists and shut-off lists do to help understand the cost of Lake Michigan water. So maybe you and I can talk offline about that.
No, we don't need to talk offline, I can tell you that right now.
Sure.
Okay. It's a public document, I'm a trustee, I wanna see it, simple.
How does that help with the cost of Lake Michigan water?
That has absolutely nothing to do with Lake Michigan water. That has absolutely, for what, absolutely everything to do with what I wanna see, and I wanna see a copy of the vacancy list.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Community Outreach, trustee Carter.
I have a question.
Thank you. Senior Management Council, instead of Mr. Coleman, this is my president. Is it on?
Greenlight.
Hello? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, board members. Report for this Tuesday, March the twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen Executive Board Meeting from the Senior Advisory Council. Our next meeting for the Senior Advisory Council is Thursday, April the eleventh, twenty nineteen, and all are welcome. Our first senior luncheon of the new year is scheduled for this Thursday, March the twenty-eighth, here in the Senior Center. The Eastern Stars are our sponsors, and will be providing lunch for the seniors free, free, free of charge. Game night every first and third Friday in the Senior Center. Please come out this Friday and invite your seniors for a bid with and other games. Cedar has requested to come back to the Senior Center on Monday, April twenty-second, and Tuesday, April twenty-third. The Senior Committee has given them an okay for those dates, and they are just waiting for approval from the state. Also, our first casino trip of the year is May the fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Flyers are in the back of the room. Please reserve your spaces on the bus as soon as possible, because we are usually filling up pretty quick. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Coleman, what time is your luncheon?
Luncheon?
The senior luncheon, there's no time. On March twenty-eighth?
Okay.
Do you know what time the luncheon starts?
Okay.
Eleven A M. to two P M.
A new business, I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance abating the taxes on the general obligation bonds tax increment refinancing bond series two thousand and two, and the general obligation capital appreciation bond tax increment alternative bond series two thousand two B of the Salt Village. It was moved by trustee, um, Grant, and second by trustee?
No.
Okay, forever and ever. Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Grant, any questions?
I have a comment. Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna reiterate what I just said. Uh, you can't make an informed decision unless you get some documentation. I have asked for documentation to find out how much, um, um, in general bonds, and bonds that we have, the amount that's there, uh, I understand we have enough, but unless you put it in writing, it does not mean too much anything. So I'm asking again for copies, even though, you know, we're gonna vote on it, I'm gonna stay, but I'm just saying, it might be who, if you just stop coming up with some of those financial documents.
Any other questions? We had a discussion on this at the last committee meeting, and, um, at that time, it was explained that this money for the two thousand and two A and B bonds come out of TIP, which is, um, generated through the, um, business that is in the TIP district, so with no expense to the village.
So where's the diamonds?
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Abstain.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Wright?
Yes.
Motion's carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance, abating the taxes on the general obligation bonds of tax increment, alternative revenue source for series two thousand and eight of the Village of Salt Village and Cookville County.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Grant, any question?
Got a comment. Mr. Mayor, this is another item that have asked for financial documents for, to, for the series two thousand and eight, haven't gotten it yet. So again, I'm asking for it again, I'd like a copy of the financial document that shows the details and the bottom line of what's in two, what's in the two series two thousand and eight bond.
Matter of course, big call, bro.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Abstain.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Motion's carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance abating the taxes from the general obligation tax increment bond, series two thousand and nine of the Village of Salt Village, Cookville County.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee?
No, you did.
Grant, any questions?
Comment. Mr. Mayor, this is another one of those, um, uh, requests that I made for a copy of the detailed ledger that, uh, describes what's going on with, uh, the series two oh nine, uh, alternate, um, resource.
Excuse me, excuse me, are we interrupting you guys? Are we interrupting you all? No, no, go ahead and take it outside, please.
No, no, you take yours outside, I'm gonna stand right here.
Really?
That's disordered.
Really?
Yeah, it's going out there, yeah.
If you wanna talk, man, you can go outside, we'll try and help. Any other questions?
My comment, my comment is interrupted. Um, I asked for detailed ledgers to, uh, for the, uh, two oh nine, for the two oh nine series, uh, bond. I haven't got that inf- my financial, financial information yet, so I'm asking again for a copy of the detailed ledger that describes the, uh, what's going on with the two oh nine series, uh, alternate revenue source. So I would like a copy of that.
Any other questions? Matter of course.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Abstain.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Abstain.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Abstain.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Motion's carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the county's payment. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Motion to accept the commercial insurance program agreement presented by Insure Sort L L State.
So moved.
I made a note of this. Um... Yes, okay. Any questions?
Comment.
Comment.
Just, just wanna make sure that this was, uh, for the renewal, and also to include the premium for the cyber security, and that's it, right?
Yes, yes. Any other questions? Matter of course.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Motion's carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve a county's payable disbursement dated March twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
The amount of five hundred and nineteen dollars, twenty-eight dollars, and sixty-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a comment. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I went in to talk to Dr., uh, Mr. Finch last week, and to get, uh, to look at the invoices on the accounts payable. However, uh, when I got to, uh, the accounts payable for Dr. Strata, it was not there. Uh, I asked that, um, was, was the time asking, but, uh, the, uh, invoices with Dr. Strata was not available for review.
I'll entertain a motion for resolution authorization and direct into submission of applications to county and cook, of Illinois, cook county and Illinois requesting community development by grant funds for the program year of twenty nineteen for the Village of Salt Village.
So moved.
Moved by trustee, Zupan, second by trustee Tate, any question?
trustee Grant?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve accounts payable. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Motion to accept the commercial insurance program agreement presented by insurance.
You skipped one, mister. The, the.
Excuse me, you actually right, I missed, I missed one. Motion to accept the recommendation of zoning board of appeals commission to adopt the twenty nineteen comprehensive plan.
So, so moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee, Zupan, second by trustee, Grant, any question? Madam clerk?
trustee Tate?
Yes.
trustee Todd?
Yes.
trustee Zupan?
Yes.
trustee Brewer?
Yes.
trustee Carter?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Now I'll entertain a motion to accept the commercial insurance program that's presented by insurance source L L State.
So moved.
I made another statement. Um, yes, okay. Any question?
Comment?
Comment, yes.
Just, just wanna make sure that this was, uh, for the renewal and also to include the premium for the cyber security and that's it, right?
Yes, yes. Any other question? Madam clerk?
trustee Todd?
Yes.
trustee Zupan?
Yes.
trustee Brewer?
Yes.
trustee Carter?
Yes.
trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve accounts payable dispersed this dated March twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
The amount of five hundred and nineteen dollars, twenty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Report.
I have a comment. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I went in to talk to Dr., uh, Mr. Finch last week and to get, uh, to look at the invoices on the accounts payable. However, uh, when I got to, uh, the accounts payable for Dr. Strata, it was not there. Uh, I asked that, um, was, was the time asking, but, uh, the, uh, invoices for Dr. Strata was not available for review or a copy. Uh, and I also, um, in fact, he has four of them, he has four of them on there and, and adds up to about six thousand dollars. So I'd like to know, again, uh, when are we gonna talk about, uh, should she be paid seventeen dollars an hour or seventeen forty-five? Uh, Dr. Strata should not be included 'cause she was never approved by the board for this, uh, this particular position. But however, she shows up every week and you guys are paying her, so I, I, I don't understand why you guys are paying her and she has never been brought to the board for approval. In addition to that, uh, we also have a, uh, an invoice on the, uh, page, uh, on the last page that refers to Robinson Engineering. And I didn't get a, a copy of the, um, uh, invoice for that because, uh, Robinson Engineering, they charging us four to seventy-six dollars for, uh, the, um, salt village gas and wash plant. It seems like that should be, uh, that cost should be bored by the, uh, developer, not by, uh, Robinson Engineering. So that in itself, I would like a copy of that, uh, invoice too. I would have, uh, asked, I did ask earlier, uh, the invoices for Dr. Strata were not available and, um, I think they just forgot about Robinson Engineering.
Any other question?
Uh, comment?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Strata does not make seventeen dollars an hour, uh, I'm just wanna point that out.
Hmm, I did not, that's what I asked, I just asked, don't we have a picture?
Did she make seventeen dollars or seventeen dollars forty-five cent an hour?
I said seventeen or seventeen forty-five.
Right.
We haven't distinguished that?
No, but she doesn't, she doesn't make that an hour, that's not her hourly rate, her hourly rate is eighty-five dollars. So I just wanted to put that for the record.
Okay, let me rephrase it. Is she working seventeen hours or seventeen point four, five hours? That's what we need to know. And that has not been made clear to us how many hours that she's supposed to be working. Hmm-hmm.
She's working extra hours as well, states that have been told to the board. And I was told, I, I told the board why she's working three days a week now, because we don't, we have, uh, we can split the finance department up until we get a financial director, that's what's planned for the board. I know you would hear that happen when we talk about it, so that's not something that you're saying that why she gets, she getting more than seventeen hours a week.
Now, yeah, I'm talking about before. And is she supposed to be, uh, getting seventeen or seventeen point four five, she gets more hours now?
Any other question? Madam clerk, please call.
What, I don't know.
trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Dr. Brewer?
No.
trustee Carter?
Yes.
trustee Grant?
Yes.
trustee Tate?
No.
Motion is carried. I did have a few things to say tonight, but due to the hour and also the gravity of, of things that are going on, I'm not going to mention it, but I will say this, next week there will not be a, um, board meeting, a committee meeting on the second of, um, April due to the election. So our next meet, meeting that we'll have will be a board meeting on the ninth and we're gonna have an inspection meeting at six thirty, but it will be posted. All I can tell those that are running for office, uh, it's election year, it's, it's going on, um, things are being said, people are, uh, saying things, I just say that you split family, friends, and acquaintances up over the election time. And I've seen this happen quite a while, I've been doing this for quite a while. It's a shame that people are growling at each other at this particular time, every two years that we have an election, that your friends or your so-called family or whatever are, um, being, I don't know, it's, it seems like it's all our battle. Yes, you're trying to get into a position, yes, you want to be an elected official, yes, you're running for office, but you shouldn't forsake your morals for that reason. And that's all I have to say. That being said, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Tate, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.